I'd like to call the planning board meeting of June 25, 2018 to order. Could we have the roll call, please?
Here.
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 Here. A salute to the flag, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The notice requirements of the open public meeting law for this meeting has been satisfied. A copy of the notice having been sent to the Esberry Park Press and the Coaster and filed in the office of the township clerk on July 25, 2017. There is an emergency exit through the courtroom doors and two exits at the rear of the room. There is a no smoking policy and no new cases will be started after 10:30 PM and no new testimony taken after 11:00 PM. In addition, the applicant will be limited to one hour of testimony. All meetings will be video and audio taped and shown on the Township of Ocean's Community Cable Channel and Channel 22 on Verizon FiOS and Channel 77 on Cablevision. All cell phones must be turned off. If you need to make a call, please make your call outside the meeting room. Now, we have a case carried to July 23, 2018. That will be Brielle Avenue LLC, Block 184, Lots 1 and 4, 1304 to 1306 Brielle Avenue, Ocean. We have minutes for approval, March 26, 2018, from the regular meeting.
I'll offer.
One second.
Yes.
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 Next, we have minutes for approval from April 23, 2018, the regular meeting. Someone offer?
I'll offer.
Second.
Mr. Chair?
Yes. Am I still in? Okay.
Yes.
Dr. Brando?
Yes.
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 Yes. Next, we have resolution memorializations, Wells Fargo Bank, Block 216, Lot 10, 10-11 Highway 35, Ocean, and a minor site plan approval. Will someone offer?
I'll offer.
I'll second.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Next, we have a resolution memorialization of Alfred and Michelle Slinger, Block 33.09, Lot 1, 608 West Park Avenue, Oakhurst. This was a major subdivision approval. Will someone offer, please?
I'll offer.
I'll second. Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. And next, we have a resolution memorialization of Maureen McCarthy Trustee, Block 39.04, Lot 7, 504 Bound Road, Ocean. This was a minor subdivision approval. Will somebody please offer?
I'll offer. I'll second. Yes.
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 Yes. That takes care of that. Next, we have the carried case number one, 266 Norwood LLC, Block 22, Lot 82, 266 Norwood Avenue, Oakhurst, Zone C1. Ms. Krimko, good evening.
How are you?
Good. And you?
Good.
All right.
We're good at everything Bill and Jim wanted. How could I not be good?
So I've heard. Sure. Okay. Like, Jim would summarize your report? Are you gonna give your report?
Yeah, I'm just gonna summarize, yeah. They're proposing to put a 612 square foot building that's gonna house an exterior freezer for a food business. They're also extending the parking lot to the rear, eliminating three parking spaces that are parallel spaces on the entrance exit drive, which is a substantial improvement, particularly since they're putting in landscaping there. And basically, they did everything, we had a TRM, they did everything we asked them to do with the TRM. There are a number of variances necessary. I don't think any of them is really consequential. One's the distance between buildings. The ordinance requires 15 feet. The distance between existing building and a proposed building is about seven feet, but that's an accessory building, really. The intent of the ordinance was between principal buildings. So I don't have a major problem with that. If you move it eight feet farther away, you're gonna lose a parking space. Parking space size, they were nine feet wide. Ordinance requires 10 feet. All of the other previously approved spaces are nine feet wide, so it makes sense to continue that. There's no loading area provided. I think you need very brief testimony as to the fact why they don't need a loading area. Minimum landscaped area in the front yard, 30 percent's required. The front yard in the, in this zone, C1 zone, is only five feet deep, and it's all sidewalk in this instance, so you can't do that. Minimum landscaped area along property lines, 25 feet's required in the front. The building only sets back 11 feet, and again, it's all sidewalk, so that I don't have a problem with. They have to have 10 feet on the side yard. There's a small area that has about four feet available, I think it is, and quite frankly, they're improving the situation by increasing the landscaped area where they're removing those three parking spaces in one of the most visible areas of the site. So I think when you look at that trade-off, it's a much better solution. Tree location and preservation plan, they're removing three dead or dying silver maples, which are, besides the fact it's a garbage tree, they're really a wreck, and they're replacing them with three three-inch trees. So technically, it's supposed to be four inches. I think the three-inch trees are more consistent with what's there now, so I think that's fine. They also say they need a variance for the curb cut in the center one-third of the lot. That was previously granted. It's not impacted. And I think you need some very brief testimony on the way the building's gonna look. It appears it's gonna be very attractive.
Okay. Thank you.
No point being redundant, like they said, they met with us, they did everything we asked. I have no engineering problem with.
Okay, Bill.
Thank you. For the record, Jennifer Krimko, on behalf of the applicant, and quickly just moving into evidence, the boundary and topographic survey is A1, prepared by Nelson Engineering Associates, and it's dated 1517. A2 is the site plan also prepared by Nelson Engineering, dated 113017, revised through 5/1718, consisting of three sheets. And then lastly, the architectural drawings by Proarc LLC, dated November 13, 2017, consisting of three sheets. And then A4 is just a color rendered site plan of which sheet, Dave? And if I can have Dave Bash sworn in, we'll answer those two questions and hopefully be on our way.
Okay.
Mr. Bash, will you raise your right hand? You promise to tell the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth, so hope you got it.
I do.
Thank you.
Mr. Bash, you're from Nelson Engineering, you're the...
Designer and project manager. Yes.
With regard to the loading, it's your understanding that the, any loading and unloading would be in a box truck no bigger than 24 feet and occurs before any business hours?
That's correct. And the purpose behind this freezer is so that they can take additional load volume to reduce the number of truck deliveries that are needed.
So there'll be no conflict with anyone on site, and a 24-foot box truck can easily maneuver through the site?
It can, it can turn around on the site in off-hours.
Okay. You had a chance to look at the architectural that we moved in as A3, based on some feedback both from the design team as well as the board's professionals. The building is actually being proposed to be constructed with an exterior material that's basically going to match that of the existing structure.
That is correct. The appearance will not be that of a freezer. It will look to be exactly as an apartment structure to the existing building.
And the freezer effectively will just be inside that building?
That's correct.
Any other questions?
Anyone?
Trees? So you're knocking some down, you're putting some back?
Yep.
There are three silver maples. The oddy vines have killed them. In replacing, in removing those, we're adding three trees in the area where the parallel parking spaces are being removed to match the existing ornamental trees that are already in that row.
So in lieu of getting a tree report saying they're dead, we're just gonna replace them with those three-inch trees?
How come three instead of four inch? You had mentioned four inch.
I think...
I think the three inch is fine. I mean, the trees that are being removed are, they're worthless. They're a hazard, so I, you know, I think they're doing everybody a favor by taking them down, quite frankly.
Right.
Is that it? Any other questions?
No more questions.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. I'd like to open us up to any public comments at this time, questions from the public?
And your client agrees to comply with all the recommendations and the engineer's report, right?
Correct.
Well, I'll close the public comment session then, and I guess we can move on?
Move to close the public hearing?
Move to close the public hearing.
So move.
Second.
Roll call.
Yes.
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 Mr. Chairman, this matter was originally scheduled, I believe, for the April meeting. It was adjourned for technical reasons, as we all know, we didn't have the May meeting. So in light of those unusual circumstances, I was asked to prepare a resolution in advance, and I have done that. And if you would desire, I can tell you what the proposed resolution states.
Certainly, go ahead.
Usual format, it's a total of about eight pages. It has the standard prefatory language. It refers to the facts set forth in Mr. Higgins' report, and it includes all the details of the variances that were referred to and testified to tonight. It includes that the applicant stipulates to comply with the report by Mr. Fitzgerald as of a few minutes ago. It has added that a condition of the approval is that any deliveries to the freezer should be before business hours, and I assume that is reflective of the testimony. And the rest of it is the standard language that everybody in the board is familiar with. Any questions?
That sounds fine to me. Anyone on the board, any questions? May I have somebody offer for positive res, for acceptance of this positive resolution?
I'll offer.
I'll second.
Go ahead.
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
I'll make those final changes. I'll send it to Rachel tomorrow. I'll send a copy to Ms. Krimko.
Thank you.
Very good. Thank you. Appreciate it.
No problem.
Okay. Good luck. Okay.
And we're gonna coordinate that for the next meeting.
Okay, Mr. Brodsky.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the board. Rick Brodsky, on behalf of the applicant, Dr. Tally Rico.
We have this new case, Tricia Tally Rico, DC Nutrition and Weight Loss Center of Ocean, Block 33.33, Lot 1, 1800 Highway 35, Oakhurst, Zone C3. And Mr. Brodsky, you can proceed, but...
Yes. Jim, are you gonna...
Yeah, I'll summarize.
To start with, we're gonna, it's Mark B. 1. And Mr. Chairman, do you want Mr. Higgins to...
Yes, Mr. Higgins is going to summarize or read his report, whatever his choice.
No, no, I'm gonna summarize. What they're proposing to do is utilize an existing approximate 950 square foot space in this shopping center building for medical use, chiropractor's office essentially. The whole building has eight 950 square foot spaces in it. Two of those are occupied by a salon, two others are occupied by retail uses, two are vacant, and then you have the subject use. So two, right now, two of the spaces are vacant in the building. The original approval for the application was for retail spaces only, and there was a condition that you couldn't have any medical or dental uses in the building because they had a requirement without medical and dental for 38 spaces, and they'd only had 34 spaces available on the site, so they received a variance. This would technically increase the parking requirement to 40 spaces. I've been at a site numerous, on numerous occasions, and counted the number of vacant spaces. There was never fewer than 11 vacant spaces. There, most of the time, there was like 13 or 14 vacant spaces when I was there. The two vacant retail spaces would require about 10 spaces. So even with those filled, you would technically, according to the ordinance, you would definitely have enough parking on the site. I think the real question before the board is whether you wanna have over a third of the spaces in this building vacant or have only 25 percent vacant just for the two, the two parking space difference. I don't have a big problem with it.
Okay.
I have a report dated June 20, Mr. Chairman. I have absolutely no engineering problem with it.
All right, Bill.
And one other point is that the condition of the site is in very good condition in terms of maintenance. There's nothing that's needed to upgrade the site.
And you've visited this site several times, you said?
I've visited, I've visited probably six times.
Has, have those visits been recent, or...?
The most recent was Friday.
Oh, that's very recent. Okay.
And Friday afternoon, just so you know, was, was a very busy time for beauty pollers.
Uh-huh.
The salon was, was jammed, and there were still 11 parking spaces available.
Jim goes every Friday.
Yeah, I go every Friday. Actually, I tried to get my wife an appointment with her salon on Friday afternoon, and they, they wouldn't take her, they didn't have room.
Okay. Mr. Brodsky?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Yes, and I'm gonna have Dr. Tally Rico step forward just to give a little brief testimony. Indeed, it's the location, the site, it's a 950 square foot site, space in this existing center. It's actually a combination chiropractic use as well as nutrition, weight loss, and they are there at different times of the day. And it's a pretty, it's, you know, it's a very low intense use, probably less intense than most retail uses. As you see from the plans that were submitted, there's just a single treatment room, there's a reception area, there's a little office for bookkeeping, but the reception, the receptionist and the bookkeeper are the same person. And so there's never, there would never be any time where there's more than just two employees, one, the doctor, chiropractor, or Dr. Tally Rico, the nutrition specialist, and the receptionist. There are only two people at any given time. The hours are very limited, and Dr. Tally Rico will go through those. And there's no hours on Fri, on Saturday, Sunday, or Monday, and, correct, and then just limited hours on the, on the other days. So it really works well for the center, never any problems. I don't wanna speak for Dr. Tally Rico, but never any problems in terms of parking either for employees or clients, et cetera. So we could have Dr. Tally Rico sworn in for some real brief...
Yes, Dr., would you raise your right hand? You promise to tell the truth, whole truth, nothing but the truth, hope you got it?
I do.
Thank you.
Okay. Dr. Tally Rico, if you would, you are, just explain to the board who you are.
I am originally a chiropractor for 32 years, and about eight years ago, I went back to school and got my master's in nutrition. In October, I had left carpal tunnel surgery, so I wasn't able to do chiropractic anymore, so I had another chiropractor come in and take over my chiropractic business, and I restricted, I do restrict myself to just nutrition.
And you're there at different times?
Yeah, we have totally separate hours. We have separate staff person in the front.
And in fact, the chiropractor is only two days a week, right? Tuesday from 8:00 AM to noon?
Yes.
And then Wednesday from 3:00 PM to 7:00 PM?
That's correct.
And then on the nutrition end, you've got Tuesday, 2 to 8:00 PM, Wednesday, 8:00 AM to 12:00 PM, Thursday, 2:00 PM to 8:00 PM, and Friday, 8:00 AM to 12:00 PM?
That's correct.
And so that's the extent of the operation?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. And so then, so it's either, it's, it's either at any one time, at any given time, it's, it's either you and the receptionist or the other doc, the other doctor chiropractor and the receptionist?
Yes.
And you have the one treatment room and the reception and office as well, correct?
I have a separate nutrition room in the back that is only used when I'm there.
Okay. And any issues with parking since you've been there?
No.
Okay. Questions, Dr. Tally Rico?
Any questions?
Yeah, I got one. So the application is with Doc, or by Dr. Tally Rico?
As the tenant, yeah.
So I gotta ask, how come you moved in before you got this done?
So when I moved in, the realtor and the landlord let me move in. It was listed as medical by the realtor. So I moved in, painted, did some redecorating.
And when was that?
That was two years ago. And then I applied for my business application, and then that's when I found out that something was not correct with me being there. And I, I think I got an email or a letter saying that I'm not supposed to be there.
Right, so that was two years ago. So I gotta ask, what took you so long?
We have, we have really been working...
Yeah, it's been filed. It's been, it was filed for, it's been filed for some time.
Engineers are shaking their heads? Yeah, we started looking at this in the fall. This past fall? Yes. So it was a year after they got the letter before they started? Because they got it in June of six, August of 16. Well, I have no idea why the, why it took a long time to get to that point, but I mean, it's kinda been moving really slowly for, for heaven's reasons.
So can I just say also that, you know, initially, I went to the realtor and to my landlord to try to straighten it out, and I'm like, well, what should I do? And, you know, so that was a couple months back and forth of correspondence until finally I realized that I needed to hire a lawyer to start this whole process with the town.
Wouldn't it be, again, educate me, wouldn't it be the... That's why I asked if it was, I mean, it says Tally Rico hears, but wouldn't it normally be the landlord's responsibility? Well, if we have both, and that's one of the problems we've had over the years, like Orchard Plaza, when it was in really bad disrepair, the owner wouldn't make the application. They always sent attendants in because the board couldn't impose conditions like fix the whole place. So anyone can be the, anyone with a reasonable interest can be the applicant.
Yeah.
Okay.
We have, we have one coming down in cobblestone.
That wasn't taken, just didn't know the history. In fact, in Seaview, most of the applicants, except when they're doing a big expansion like, like the one they did fairly recently, most of the applicants have been attendants. Okay. Thank you.
It was filed a year ago.
Okay.
So it's been working its way through.
Thank you.
Is that it, Mr. Brodsky?
That's all I have.
Well, I'd like to open it up to public comments if we could at this point. Does anybody have a comment regarding this particular subject?
I've got a quick question for Mr. Brodsky. Is there anything in the literature that reaffirms hours as Dr. Tally Rico just testified to?
I don't recall if there was a narrative. I can look it up.
Well, I just suggested if the board is amenable to a passive resolution, if you could just send me that.
Sure.
Yeah, I guess the question I have, I think the important thing is that, that the key testimony is there's gonna be no more than two employees on site at any one time, or two, I guess, the owner and one employee, or two employees. I think that's an important condition it should be in any resolution. That the real question is, are the hours of operation that critical? Should we lock her into those very, very limited hours of operation or allow a little bit more flexibility? Because I don't think this use is gonna have a great impact on the parking availability on the site regardless of when they're open.
I think you accomplish by saying the number of employees accomplishes...
Yeah.
Not, not to have the hours.
I'm fine with that.
Yeah, that, that's my feeling.
It makes the resolution easier, so...
Yeah.
The testimony is there's going to be only one...
One professional and one staff.
One staff at any particular time, because your hours between you and the chiropractor don't correlate, they're not at the same time.
Right, we don't...
How many spaces are on the site?
Thirty-four.
Thirty-four.
How big is the overall, the whole building?
The whole building is 7,632 square feet. There's, there's basically eight 950 square foot units there, and I calculated that if it was all retail, each unit would require five spaces.
That's retail, you're saying?
Yeah, retail, yeah.
And a pure medical use?
If it's medical, it would require seven.
More?
No, seven total.
Seven per unit?
So two more, two more. Yeah.
Is it by appointment only? Yes.
So that would be, would be a major shortfall.
What's that?
If it was seven.
If it was seven, it would be a big difference, yes, yes.
And how many other medical uses are in this building?
None, none. And you're not really, you're not really approving this for a medical use, you're approving it for this medical use with the restrictions you're putting on it.
My, my only problem, and this has nothing really to do with the applicant, is this landlord could fish another person in that's medical again, and this could continue, and what do we do to stop that?
Well, each, each case would be a separate case. They'd have to come before you. There's still a restriction that there could be no medical or dental on the site, and if they come before you with another medical use, you may, may say this really isn't gonna be that bad and put the restrictions on it, or you could say, no, this is gonna be a very bad thing, and it's gonna impact the site, we don't want it there.
Yeah, I can make the resolution clear so that Mr. Brodsky, if he's ever asked, will make it very clear to the landlord that the owner better not let anybody in there without prior approval for a better use.
Right, I think there should be a message sent to the, to the landlord that this is not permitted.
Yes.
I believe, first time exactly.
Yeah. No, I understand, but we need to do our part.
Yeah.
Just because someone else is not doing their part doesn't mean that we should ignore that.
I think, no offense to chiropractic, but I think there was a question as to on the landlord's, from the landlord's perspective, whether chiro, chiropractic, what's the word? What's the practice?
Is it medical?
Chiropractical...
Oh, chiropractic.
Chiropractic service was included within...
Medical?
The definition of medical.
I take a chiropractor would be affected by that.
Yeah. I said, I prefaced, I prefaced my statement.
I heard you say that. I saw Dr. Tally Rico looking.
Passing that along from, that's what the landlord's message was.
And that was my initial argument with the town. I said, but we're not medical, we're chiropractic.
Oh.
She's not offended.
Oh, I thought she was.
No, and, and the person at the town said chiropractic is considered under medical.
Yeah.
Yes.
It's a fine line. It really is. You're not dispensing medicine, or you're not taking blood, and you're...
And we have our own chiropractic board of examiners, so...
What's that?
Why would, why would I think that we are considered under medical?
The difference between, it's really a function of the potential use.
Yeah.
On an initiation, you should be considering chiropractic, except that it actually was a function of including chiropractic in the medical.
Yes. Yes, exactly.
Okay. So, all right. So at this juncture, closing the public comments, although there were none, but we had a few from our board members, and at this point, we would like to close the, the hearing as well. So will somebody please give forward a motion on it?
I'll offer.
Second. Yes.
Yeah. Yes.
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 Yes. Okay, um, at this point, a vote on this particular subject?
Specifically in voting.
For the, uh, positive resolution that...
Let someone, uh, offer a motion, and then I'll suggest some clarifications.
Okay. Okay.
Whoever can advise if that's consistent with what they are thinking.
So offered.
And seconded.
So Mr. Deputy Mayor Serra has moved that. So, um, I would call everybody's attention to, uh, Jim's analysis on page two. So I would include the details, uh, as he noted the visitation, and therefore, we would rely on his testimony as to general vacancy. In terms of limitations of use, um, we would key in to the second-to-last paragraph, and, uh, key in on the limitation of professionals and employees. So at any one time, there should be no more than one professional and one employee of that professional on site during, uh, any workday. Uh, it, it seemed like the consensus might be that, um, you don't wanna necessarily, uh, want to require a limitation on the hours, as Dr. Tallerico testified to, uh, just for general purposes, Dr. Tallerico. Normally, uh, representations at a hearing bind, but, uh, if I understood correctly, we don't wanna be that strict, and I think, uh, Mr. Serra is, is affirming that would be the case. Uh, however, the resolution would make clear that the, uh, the use that is being permitted strictly relates to the nine-hundred-and-fifty-square-feet, and that the owner is put on notice that, uh, no other, uh, square footage, uh, at this mall, is that right, proper, at this mall, shall be, uh, used for medical purposes without an approval by the township. Actually, by this board, unless there's a change in the zoning, right? Uh, would that, uh, correlate with your understanding, Deputy Mayor?
I'm good, sure.
Okay?
It's fine.
Very good.
Gotta vote?
Okay, could we vote on a positive resolution, or somebody?
You need us...
Seconded.
Yes. It's fine.
Yes.
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 Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Good luck. Continue to... Continue to... Thank yous are only in the third inning. We're good.
It's not, it's not quite right, Brodsky.
Oh, okay.
But I'm trying.
Blood eight plus?
I didn't.
Okay, next on the, uh, on the list, DSN Community Center, block thirteen, lot nineteen, two forty-four, Norwood Avenue, O curse, zone C-one. And, um, somebody gotta offer on a positive resolution?
I offer on a positive resolution.
I'll second.
This would be based on the, uh, recommendations set forth in our professionals' reports.
Exactly.
Yes.
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 Yes. End of meeting.
Now it's official.
adjourned.